Pressure. It is 7:02. I will call our Monday, August 21st meeting to order. Roll call. Joel is not with us this evening. Rod?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
And also here, and Dr. Slarnow. Has the meeting been properly announced?
Yes.
And will please join in the pleasure of meeting. I'd like to testify about the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would someone like to read the mission statement?
I will. Mount Horeberry School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-reliant members of society.
Thank you, Jim. Number two, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Rod. All those in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of our August 7th, 2023 Board Regular Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Seven. Motion by Rod and second by Carly to approve our August 7th, 2023 Board Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two C, approval of our August 14th, 2023 Special Executive Meeting Minutes. Motion by Carly.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor of approving our August 14th Special Executive Meeting Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three A, school news. You got anything?
No, I don't have much for this one to live.
That's okay.
School starts soon.
That's very true. Dr. Slarnow could probably even tell us how many days.
I'm excited. September 1st is just right around the corner. Unfortunately, due to the really warm temperatures, in fact, there's a heat warning, not even a heat watch, we've had to make a decision to unfortunately cancel our golf match tomorrow in Baraboo, as well as our hosting our soccer game tomorrow night. And we're also watching very closely what will happen Wednesday and Thursday. Please stay tuned for that. I know we have a lot of disappointed athletes who've already been training very hard, and coaches who've dedicated themselves to supporting our young people. I just, no one wants anything to happen to our kids when they're out on the field. So, all practices will be done by 11:00 a.m. tomorrow morning that are outdoors in nature. And I want to just take a moment to thank our friends at the Lions Club. Today, they stopped by and dropped off a check to the school district to support school supplies for our young people. They recently had something called Stuff the Bus. Maybe you read about this in the paper. And they actually had people who gave cash donations in addition to, you know, crayons and notebooks and folders and those kinds of things. The materials were dropped off with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, but the cash donations were given to the school district in which then we can help support students and families, purchase items, and/or staff. You know, our staff, bless their hearts, they often take money out of their very own pockets in order to enhance classroom supplies and these sorts of things. And so, this will go a long way to helping us. It's Viking Voyage Week this week, so we've got staff who are coming in and great professional development opportunity. Thank you, Sarah Straka, for charting a course of excellence on our voyages. And today, first day was letters training. And then, of course, we welcome our new staff on Wednesday and Thursday of this week for their first part of orientation. Twenty-three new staff members who will join us here. And we, of course, have our convocation taking place on Monday morning at 8:00 a.m. I invited a very dear friend of mine from La Crosse, a gentleman who is a distinguished professor of servant leadership, Mr. Tom Thibodeau, to offer our opening keynote comments. And we'll have a few surprises along the way, too. So, I'm looking forward to the staff's arrival. It's exciting to start seeing people coming into our schools.
Anybody else have any?
The K5 PTO has launched the Bucky Book Sales starting today, and then runs through December. So, if you need a Bucky Book, buy it through our link. We get $10 for every book that we sell, and they'll deliver it right to your house so you don't have to try to pawn somebody now for it.
Anyone else? Dr. Slarnow, I know we don't meet for another two weeks, but, and I also know that you're very good at writing thank you cards, but maybe we should send a thank you card to the Lions Club and Neighbors Helping Neighbors as well, if you wouldn't mind bringing one, and we can sign it in our next meeting.
Our finance committee will officially accept that donation. It was $1,377. Some talk about how generous is that. So, yet most assuredly, I'll bring cards for us to the next meeting. Or if you'd like, I'd be happy to send one on behalf of the board. Okay.
Three B, citizens' comments. I'm guessing that we have citizens' comments.
We do. Welcome, Mr. and Mrs. Slarnow.
I will remind those in attendance that Board of Education Policy 187, of participation at board meeting, welcomes input from our community about topics germane to education. We ask speakers to please provide their name and address for the record. In accordance with board policy, speakers should please keep their comments to no longer than three minutes so others who wish to speak can, and the full business of the board can be accomplished. I will ask Dr. Slarnow to please keep time and notify speaker that he or she is approaching three minutes. Lastly, the purpose of citizens' comments is for the board to collect input, not engage in a one-on-one debate.
Good evening. My name is Bill Olson. I live at 9544 East Perry Center Road, Mount Hore. I'm here this evening to follow up on our appearance at the annual meeting, wherein we cast some nay votes on the resolutions. And I wanted to really explain that to you so you have a thorough understanding of why we took that action. I think that's very important, that you understand that. We did achieve our objective at that meeting, one which was to demonstrate to you that it's not just me objecting to the district flying the pride flag. There are other people out there. There are a lot of other people out there that are objecting to this. And to show to you that the power of the citizens is there, that the power is there to sway the outcome of votes on these resolutions. And it could have gone the other way. It may not have been approved had we elected to have all of our resources here. And I trust that you folks have reflected upon that what-if scenario of the resolutions not being approved. What do you do then? I suspect you probably have Plan B in place, which would be very, very smart and the right thing to do. But that could have very well happened that evening. However, in our planning for that meeting, we decided that to have enough people here to vote down those resolutions would have been too drastic of a measure to try and get our point across. We appreciate the work that you folks do, and we know how busy that you are. And we did not want to add more work to your plates than what you have already. So, we felt that was too drastic, but we were, we had some robust discussions about what our strategy was going to be. And instead, decided to, in military parlance, just send a shot across your bow, let you know that, hey, you got a bunch of concerned people out here? We could marshal the resources if we needed to, to affect outcomes of things. And we want you to take us seriously. Please do not, you know, respond just with platitudes, of thanks for your comments. We want to see some real response to that. And I think that that's very important, that there is some real response here. And that resolution, as I have stated before, is very easy. There is a very easy way to resolve our concerns here. And that is simply taking the same steps that were taken, I'm almost done, taking the same steps that were taken when flying the pride flag was implemented several years ago. It's simply you two folks deciding that, hey, this is not in the best interest of the district to be flying this flag. It's not in the best interest for the district to fly anybody's flag. Don't take sides with anybody. Stay neutral. That's what's important. And that's a very simple decision and an issue. And that's it. So, thanks for your time. I would like, would appreciate getting a timely response as to your decision on how you're going to move forward on this. Thank you.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you, Dr. Slarnow.
Number four, personnel transactions. Is there anything that you would like to highlight?
I would. Would you mind noting the very last comment on the original document? This is with regard to that time of year where we manually ask the board to please allow the superintendent the opportunity to accept any certified hiring positions that we need so that way, we can start the school year off on the right foot. And then, of course, we would absolutely bring names to the full board on September 5th, when we next meet. And then, board members, you also notice that there's an addendum to that as well.
Motion to approve. With the addendum. Motion by Leah, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, second by Jim, to approve personnel transactions with the addendum. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out and discuss? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items. Six A, our committee and village liaison member reports. Carly, do you want to begin with the CalAid update?
Yes. So, I have a couple things. We actually haven't met as a committee since the last update that I gave. So, there's another meeting update to give, but I did want to draw everybody's attention to the August issue of the Wisconsin School News, published by the Wisconsin Association of Schools, in which Jeff Aragoni is a co-author of an article. And a couple of pages later, our cafeteria is featured for the, as part of an article about community engagement for the candidate event we did last August. So, Mount Hore. Yes.
My husband's even love pictures.
Is he?
We are all like.
Yeah. I think I might have taken one of the pictures. Though I think, I think I would have taken this one. Yeah. So, yeah. So, Mount Hore is in statewide news twice. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we will be meeting together again. We will be doing work again, coming up soon as the winter approaches, to look for community engagements. We talked about facilities again. So, as the board is interested, as the community is interested, parents, other community members, who want to do, begin that work again to get engaged to look at facility plans for the future. That will be coming up.
Any questions for Carly? No? All right. Adam, do you want to give the education committee a break?
Yeah, absolutely. We had a nice report from Sarah Straka talking about the recent bills that were put through that get to early literacy instruction. And we're in a good position to be able to act on that and follow through, thanks to the work of Sarah and the rest of the district in terms of getting the new reading curriculum in. Obviously, a lot of work to be done, but in a good spot, so that's good news. Equity work, there was, staffs can be participating in restored practices training this month and in September, which is a cool thing to get people involved in. We got to review the part of the American Rescue Plan Act, our plans for basically dealing with COVID and pushing that through. I think September 30th was the date that we had to have a plan in place until. So, we all enjoyed kind of looking at that and hopefully be able to set that away into a folder, a little binder for a little while after that date, hit that date. And then, a large portion of the meeting was dedicated to talking about the ID conference that Taliisa, Steve, and Sarah reported on. And just getting a little more information about what was out there, seeing some of the promise of that, and talking through opportunities that we're going to want to pursue and discuss here in coming months to see where we invest our time and energy into upgearing that opportunity forward. So, it was really good discussion. Many more to come. Too much to try to encapsulate in an education debrief here, but I'm sure that you're available for questions. Sarah's available for questions as well.
President Aragoni had a wonderful suggestion. She said, well, couldn't we have that be part of our learning at the workshop at the end of October? And count on it, absolutely. But in the interim, certainly, we'd love to field any questions people have. I want you to have what you need.
Any questions for Adam? Six B, information advocacy report, life-ready indicators. Brian and Sarah.
Thank you very much. This report is really focused again on well-being, right? And so, when we look at the whole child through this lens, what are some pieces that we maybe missed throughout the whole school year, right? And we focus on some of the data and information, and these are some extra pieces that kind of connect in looking at that whole kid approach. The first piece to that is the academic and career planning piece. There's multiple different touchpoints that we hit for students in talking about what their next step is post-high school. And that really starts strong in our middle school. And really, that eighth grade year, they're developing specific plans on what they're thinking that they're trying to do, and then what classes connect to that career path. And then, that goes home. And then, parents get to review it, and then sign it, and then it comes back. And then, that's what students are developing their class schedules on and kind of their trajectory moving forward. And then, starting their freshman year, there's individual meetings with students to connect and continue to set goals all the way through their senior year, when they're doing senior information sessions and talking about what the next steps are for filling out applications or getting your internships. And it's all done during stat time. And if you just go to the whole senior, the high school in general, the Student Services Team has a lot of these presentations that they've done videotaped and online for anybody to access and see.
And as Brian talked about, the whole student, even part of the life-ready pieces that we talked about, portrait of a graduate, where we want our students to go as we think about our strategic planning. And one piece could be how they interact and engage with the community, how they volunteer. So, we have our Silver Cord program that you all are probably familiar with, especially if you have a high schooler. And we can see over time the number of students who have received the Silver Cord, meaning they met that threshold of 140 hours by the time they hit senior year, volunteering within the community or greater community. As we can see over time, it has decreased, especially when COVID hit. We saw a hit. But numbers seem to be stabilizing a bit. But hopefully, we'll see students taking more advantage of going out into their community to help others and engage with our community. The disaggregated piece, always try to have that in these reports. We did not have, I did not include race this time just because there were too few students that would have been identifiable. So, we did divide by gender, and then students labeled with a disability. You can see the total number or percentage of students within the second and third column within that grade, the senior grade, and then the number of students within the total of the 33 that participated in Silver Cord between male, female, and students labeled with a disability. Graduation is also something that we pride ourselves in. We want to be above the state average. We want to make sure every student walks across the stage and has a diploma. And actually, while the table doesn't necessarily show that with our official numbers that are submitted through Infinite Campus to DPI, we actually did have 100%, of students graduate this past year. So, sometimes between Infinite Campus, sending things to DPI, there's glitches. So, that's why I do like to do these reports, because I can dig in and say, what? These two students didn't? Why? And then, we can make those corrections with DPI, which is nice.
Well, and we've shared this in the past, too, right? The students who continue with our 18- to 21-year-old program don't count as graduates, but they really have met graduation requirements or are on track to graduate. And so, there's little things that don't quite fit with DPI's specific data, but really in actuality, they've met their goals, and they're just continuing to work on life-scale goals.
That wasn't an issue, though, this year.
Was it?
No.
Nice.
No. Yeah.
So, attendance rates, as we know, being consistently at school is an important factor in school success. And so, we kind of show some of our data. It's fluctuated. When you look at it back pre-COVID, almost every grade is, it's weird because it looks pretty flat. It's actually improved a little bit, but a big drop from 2021. And so, it's pretty consistent throughout the years. But when you break it down to the next slide, you can see some bigger gaps. And so, especially when you look at some of the younger grades from the 18-19 data, where we're seeing symptoms. And so, we really want to, as we've talked previously throughout the board, we're continuing to work on attendance matters, running some posters, some flyers, kind of some parent education about the importance of being at school and why it matters. And so, we're continuing to work on that and kind of push that. Also, the full-day attendance policy approving will make us closer in alignment to what DPI considers a full day of attendance versus how we were reporting it. And so, that will also help with some of the data as well.
And that's all we have. So, thank you. Do you have any guys, any questions or wonders?
I think the attendance piece is going to be re-education. We spend so long telling people, if you have any of these symptoms, you're not going to school. And so, now you're like, I don't know if I'm supposed to send you or not send you. Like, we never did kind of a reintroduction to, okay, that's out the window. Like, everybody kind of knows it, but I think it was so ingrained. You're like, I don't know. Better safe than sorry, I guess, stay home. I think that's, a lot of people are not sure what to do.
Yeah.
Is that what, then, like, I was just curious, like, what the percentage actually, how it's actually calculated? Is it, is it like every possible day and all the students in the combination of how many student days a week's here?
Students in the building, yeah. Students in the building, so actual attendance. It doesn't take into effect.
After, what, men's sake?
Correct. It's actually being in the building.
So, you'd never really want this to be 100, then? Because people do get sick. And we don't want people to come to school when they're sick. And so, you just want it to be as high as reasonable.
So, we're pleased with the attendance. Graduation rate is great. But I hope you better understand. I just, maybe I'm missing something, but back to the Silver Cord hours. What can we do better? Or why isn't this an expectation? I mean, we don't, we don't even have one out of every five kids getting Silver Cord hours.
Almost. We don't have one out of five kids completing the 140 hours.
Okay.
Right? So, there's kids that get 20 hours, 30 hours, 80 hours, 130 hours, but they may not complete it. And that's a piece.
We keep them on track.
That's a piece that we can provide. It goes to where we want to put our energy, right? So, if this is an area that the board decides is the area we want to go with our strategic plan, and the portrait of the graduate work, when we talk about that at the high school level, then that's a place we'll have to put more energy to. Silver Cord is a voluntary program right now, right? It's not a have-to by kids. We also know that we have kids very involved in other things. So, where do you find the time is also a piece of it. We do have community members reaching out for help on things, and sometimes it is hard to get students wanting to be there or able to be there due to time. So, I totally agree with you. We want kids engaged. It's, if we want to put more time to it, we can put more time to it, yes.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the answer.
Yeah.
When you break it down, it's.
Yep. I didn't, I didn't use any, like, adjectives or anything positive or negative when I presented it. It was just, this is one of those.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Again, I think it comes back to the students. I realize resources and energy are very tight as administrators.
Yep.
We break 140 hours down over four years, it's three hours a month.
All the more reason, I think, when we look to an international baccalaureate program that has a career-related program pathway, we're talking about youth apprenticeship and getting involved in volunteering. In my mind, that's a requirement to get the CP diploma.
Community engagement is one of the four pillars. Yep.
I think, related for me, I was struck by the disproportionate number of young women.
I'm sure Dr. Slarnow could, and Club Interacts could attest to the meetings, which are.
Students.
Yeah.
I'm proud of them, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know. I'm curious if you've had any observations or thoughts on why it's disproportionately that way? Is there, are boys involved in other activities? Or if there's not, anything to engage them?
My guess is the guys just aren't following through with completing the paperwork. I'll give you an example. Our football team the other day, they came out in mass at 9:30 in the morning, and then they came back at 9 o'clock at night to help out at the Rotary 10K raffle. They won't fill out the paperwork yet. I'll bring it to them and say, here, fill this out, and I'll sign it. Our female students tend to be a little more conscientious around those kinds of things at this age, so. Help them paint with a brush, but.
You also can't double-dip. So, you have kids who are National Honors, who come to events and get their hours for National Honors, not Silver Cord, because I don't know what National Honors is, but I think it's roughly about the same amount of hours. So, then, that doubles. And I also know we have to be better at defining what Silver Cord is because I know my kid would turn stuff in or go, and they'd be like, that doesn't qualify. And I'm like, hmm, why though? Like, it doesn't make sense? So I think that's... Those are some pieces. And I know for a while it was, it's, it's hard for them to find. Or at least that's what they say. I know stuff gets posted. There's like a bulletin board. I know for PTO, you reach out. And sometimes, depending on what the event is, we get a lot of kids and sometimes we don't get any. So... But yeah, we did add, so like, but babysitting can count if you do it for free. So like, my son used to watch one of the neighbor kids' family didn't have money. He's like, well, I don't care, like, and then found out like his senior year when he was short, they're like, oh, that counts? Oh, okay, cool. So...
So why, 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 why can't hours spent volunteering in church or with a political organization, why can't they be? Why aren't they counted?
I think you can. Volunteer to teach Sunday School or summer Bible class can count.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But they, you can't count it for like, if you're a Girl Scout, even like you're doing volunteer work, you can't double dip there either.
Right, right. I was just... Okay. I just, in our next presentation, Mr. McCormick's gonna show us all these great students that volunteered.
A lot, yeah.
That had to be hours and hours. Is he halfway there?
They can get up to eight. And with the new kind of leadership stuff that they have an opportunity to become part of, that's a good another five to ten if they did all four weeks. And so you're halfway there for just the five, twenty summer mornings. But those schedules, I mean, you need a, you need a master's degree in schedule-making for high school student schedules now. And, and you need the, the tanker of gas for the parents to drive them to all the things.
I also wish we had like an electronic way to put it in because they tell you to like, keep track of it. Because I'm like, you have to have more hours. You did this and this and this. But you have no way to go, at least what you can see in an campus, what those hours are. You just cannot be able to see that. You have no idea what they counted, what didn't get counted. So when they're like, well, you have to keep track, you're like, but I don't know what this makes up. So then somebody at the office has to go find sheets of paper. I think if we made it a little easier from that aspect, it could be, it could, it could make the turn-in a little better. They stick them in a, in a bin outside the office. All of, somebody being a jerk that day grabs a bunch of forms, then those hours don't count.
Well, we have a new administrative assistant in the, in the Student Services Office. That's a great suggestion. We'd be happy to pass along and see if that would be something we can make happen.
Because you could even set up like a Google form and you could put in like the per, like they could put in my email as the PTO person and I'd say, yes, they did those things. Like, we could, we could figure out a routing system that wouldn't cost us more money, but it would help, I think, for the bookkeeping portion of it.
Save time, efficiency, yeah.
I didn't want to go down the side street there, but I, I mean, perhaps maybe workshop and talk about that, of just how we can encourage our great students that one little bit of effort and they get credit for this.
I'd be, I'd be curious. I could include a breakdown of future reports if, if this is a report that we continue of those that met the hundred and twenty, hundred and ten. I'd probably see quite a few students who, who were almost there but didn't quite get there. And we just, I know we have some middle school boys coming up. We just got to get a couple of middle school boys to start doing it, then all their friends. Get more males, Jim.
Well, and they have to have them by like halfway, they have to hit so many hours by their, middle of their junior year. So like if they, is it only seventy?
They did, they have to get halfway by this, by September one of their senior year.
Okay.
I thought it was the junior year, but it seemed very, yeah, telling everyone.
You could just tell your kids it's a graduation requirement. That's what I did. I know all the people that sign diplomas and still, they have to do it.
I mean, one of the things we take a look at at the workshop is what we're prohibiting, right? Like, why are we discouraging people to be involved civically? And, and why, why doesn't that count? I mean, that sends a horrible message to kids and, and, and forecloses on an opportunity that they may want to take advantage of.
It sounds like this is where we want to put some energy. Now I know. This is good. This is why we do these. Thanks, guys.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Sixty, summer school report. Sarah and Eric.
Welcome, Eric.
Hey, all right. Ah, to piggyback up on that because that's what we like to do. You will see in this recap. Am I gonna make my stand, make me stand up? Ah, you will see in this recap.
I'll do this.
There's, oh, thanks. There's a little bit of a gap in our middle school opportunities. And what I'm hearing is maybe some opportunities to start the Silver Court a little earlier, meaning that instead of the classes, because we do have a small percentage of classes available with middle school students. We can talk about that in just a little bit. So, my last official duty as part of the Mount Horeb School District. This was a baby created five years ago under Sarah's vision and...
And Eric's implementation.
Ah, okay, just... This is, ah, been so worthwhile of a trip and adventure. Our agenda here, we'll take a brief look at the history. I'll show you what the daily school, um, school day would look like from mentor perspectives and student perspectives and teacher perspectives. And then offer some ideas for the future. So, real quick, once you get done with this, some learning objectives. That's going to carry on, by the way. So, you can share these things. What I want you to get out of tonight is that you can share this with somebody outside of here and it would just be like me talking without all the hand gestures. So, how many years we've had it, how many summer sessions are there? How many, which years have we had enrichment classes? What are the benefits or how, how have students benefited from a, uh, summer school? And what do we can do to keep moving forward? Obviously, there's a big target for high school mentors, but we will need some staff too. So, with that, this is, the picture up top is one of the art classes. Miss O, bless her, she moved from one class to the next, wanted to move back to the middle school. And all these lovely faces walked triumphantly with all their possessions to and from the pier to back to the IC. But she had a full range of students and just did a really wa, wonderful job with them, so. Summer of nineteen, we kicked it off. I believe, I think we opened, or you opened it on Infinite Campus on a Tuesday at ten o'clock and it closed by Tuesday, ten oh five. And with a waiting list, it was quite popular. We offered three classes per day and we were at the IC. We had two two-week sessions, just like we do now. They would go from eight to eleven-thirty. Twenty twenty, everything stopped. We went to that beautiful platform of, of virtual, which is still causing nightmares, but we'll get through that. But the kids that were still doing that still made a connection with the teachers that they were there, that they were there with. And that was, I think, a very key point with the history of this is the connections that these teachers are making with ones that they've had, ones that they're going to have and, and ones that they will see in the future. We transitioned back to face-to-face in twenty twenty-one and then we, to keep it minimized, we had the six through eight at the middle school and K through, K through five at the intermediate center. Last year, we had them all here. Our enrollment dipped a little bit from our three sixty-nine in the two thousand and nineteen. But we stepped, we kept with the two-week, two two-week sessions. Now, this year, we had three hundred and ninety-six enrolled at the beginning of, of the sessions. Some give or take, and then we had some late enrollees. So I didn't get the final number, but that would be pretty close if it's not. So that's, that was what we were looking for. I think a goal was four hundred at the last time I had one of these. But I was, I, I've been pretty pleased with the steady growth with this summer. The only difference between this year and a few other years has been we off, we had a two-week break in between the sessions and that was more for staff to get to the professional learning communities, PLC events in Madison, which is another viable PD element. So we, to make that work, they got the break. Didn't see much hang-ups or disorganization from students. It was a minor thing, minor adjustment. But I don't think, I mean, with all the other schedules, it was, they got back into it pretty good. I'll be interested to see, because we start, we come back a week later, if that helps with the transitions at the beginning of the year. But I'm gonna need your input on that, so. So that's, that's what we've done. We have gone from reading and math to summer theater, summer theater camp was there from the beginning. But the Masters of Mindfulness, Card Club, which has been a good one. The chess has, I, I don't, I can't believe how many kids are playing chess and like, it's cutthroat. I mean, you just, you can't just, yeah, it was, I've got a ten-year-old saying, you can't make that move. I'm like, but I never lift my finger and, you know, it just, he beat me pretty handily, so. Snacking and booking was, is, is always fun to do. This is our friend Silas, and I'm going to come back to Silas because what you see in front of him is things that he created pretty much on his own. But it, it's, it was, it was really fun to see. But these are the, these are the things that we offered through session one and/or session two. The big thing is stu, is teacher. I don't want to call it the ability to do it. I just think, you know, the want is there. I just, you know, the time. It, it, you know, it all, it comes down to the time and teachers are like, I want a break and so. But we can go to their, yeah, that's what we've had around. Crafts Around the World is a very popular one. A little expensive, but we get through it. So we send this form out historically every year to all the parents. This year, we had sixty-seven responses. We have about eighty percent that took both sessions. That's about on par. Might be a little low, it seems. But it, just to give you a little standard on what on who participated in the survey, that is ninety-eight point five out of the sixty-seven. That's a little higher than the five, in the other five years that we've done it. But I'm still pleased with those numbers. This one is, this one again is on par and I think the same reasons as to why they are not going to enroll the nine percent is they're capping out, they're, they're not recommended any longer or there's not as many viable options at the middle school. So that's usually where that nine percent is coming from. But everybody still says that they are, they still benefited from it, so we're good there. Some of the things that's, families have said, friends, variety classes, but then the consistency having a, a daily routine is some of the key things that come through the families. But the mentors, this group. There was, there was a lot of strong, willing people and I, I tried to make it as compatible to what their interests were as, as their classes. So for example, the, um, the play that we have, the summer play, we have actors that are like actually like going probably to school further in high school. We're coming back and doing this. And I do believe Cohen came back from Iceland early. I kid you not, he was still jet-lagged, but he wanted to make it back for that last week to be with the kids, so. This is our day. We've got kids on, on coding, on chess, on Crafts Around the World, showcasing talents, showcasing what they create. To go back to Silas, Silas was not a fan of clay creatures. It might have been the walk and we'll go into what the disaster, disaster plans that we've set up each mo, each summer that we've had to come up with on the fly. But Silas might not have liked the walk. But he had, once we put gloves on, he was ready to go and he made his own TikTok set with all his, with all his Xs and Os, so. I was quite, and, and his teacher's like, yeah, as soon as we put the gloves on, he was good to go and he made all of that all by himself, so. Just the connections. Miss O, just work, working with him and his, and his parish supports and Mara. Crafts Around the World, making snakes. I know it might look like the same kind of photo from the first, on the previous slide to the slide that's over here, but they are composing their music in this one. That has really taken off. The ukuleles has, is a second, second summer of that and I think it's full. It fills up pretty fast. And then we have our fiction, we have our writers. They're on the left with Miss Pevitt, well, just Mrs. Kay. Snacking, booking, Crafts Around the World again. This is another I'm gonna break out. I might get a little emotional in this one. In fact, it's coming. On the left is Laney. A little bit of a story from last year. I threw Laney to Michael and another student. We didn't have as much support. And I said, are you willing? She was still in high school. I said, are you willing to work with these students? I'll be there. I'll get you there. Michael was one of her students that she worked with every day during summer school last year. And I remember talking at the end with Brian and Sarah. I'm like, we gotta do something because she went above and beyond. How, now she, or what she did was we hired, Brian, I think, hired her to work with Michael through the, through the year. She did some things at the middle school as well and I believe, and you can help me out, she's going to school in some sort of education. But this year, she's on, she's past the mentor stuff. I'm gonna keep referring back to Mrs. O or Miss O. Miss O and Laney are Face, Facebook friends. Miss O gets word that she worked with, or she, she knows through school, Michael's in summer school. Michael is making a friendship bracelet and wants to give it to you, Laney. So what does Laney do on the second to last day? Comes over and just works with him and that's Michael give her, give her their friendship bracelet. So they worked two, maybe a week or week and a half of last summer all through this, through this year and then met up again in the summertime. So relationships matter and it's pretty cool to watch because I don't know if you know Michael. Michael doesn't say a lot, but he all, he's very aware of his surroundings and very aware of who's he's with and he made it a point to make sure that she got that, so. Long story short, that, that's, that's a moment I'm going to be able to keep forever. These smiling faces. Some of them have been with me since they've been able to. Fay, who's in the bottom right with the necklace. She has worked with kindergarten all three years. Had a total number of sixty-four at some point work. And again, working with their schedules, some, one, one person was one day. Another person was all four weeks. One, you know, vacations were in there. Sixty-four kids came through and worked with students and teachers in their respective classrooms. Paired up with friends. Some have been requested by teachers. Some just were, I was, they were up for anything. The middle, Joey Shervin, he's the third one up, kind of a curly hair. His brother Nate just finished eighth grade. But Joey said maybe five words as an eighth grader in my room. He, um, he's going to Brazil to learn, to take a year of school in Brazil. He was having problems with his visa and he's like, can I come back? And I'm like, oh, yeah. And I paired him up with a student that he was working with in the summertime, in the first two weeks. And so it was pretty cool to see them bond and make a connection and kind of help him out because he was, he's, he can be a little squirrely, as we'll say. So what's great about this group, and I'll get to the stats in a minute, but Anamita, I'm gonna mess up her first name, but she broke it down as, as, only as she could as to why she wanted to be a Silver Court member. Maybe.
So why did you volunteer in social?
I volunteered for summer school because I heard about it last year and it's really good. And I kind of like working with kids, so it was like a fit for me.
Thanks.
Yeah.
What she forgot to tell you, what she says in a later video is that she loves to get, getting up early in the, in the, in the summertime, so. Another student, I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna make sure I get his name too. Graham Olsterhols. First day, he's in ukulele, sees a student that doesn't have one and the student is just kind of bummed that she really would like to, to work with one. And he emails me, he's like, I have a spare one. Can I just donate it? Unfortunately, it went to my spam, so I didn't see it for the first couple of days. But he's like, yeah, I already took care of it. And, and he, he already handed it in. So, I mean, I know you want... So, I mean, I know you want that civic idea more populated. It's here, you just want more of it. And for the most part, I would say ninety-nine percent of these students didn't do, didn't do this for the hours, but they just liked the connection. And I think I've been doing it in justice, as promoting it for Silver Court, rather than just being a community builder. But these, this is our first session group. And then, um, another, another photo is we have our second session, so some of the, um, schedules, they couldn't make both sessions. So, that's what we have. So we surveyed them. Um, I had two no's, and I had to go back and try to figure out. They didn't necessarily like who they were paired with at the end of the time. And then with absences and figuring out, there were some that didn't get quite get who they wanted. And so it made it a little bit of an awkward, uh, not awkward, but just not as hopeful as that they were. But they still came every day. Um, same kinda thing. Uh, I wish that was a little bit higher, but in those responses for no, some of that was, I really didn't know how to play chess. And I'm like, only then do I, but, you know. Um, it just not being able, not comfortable enough with the subject material. Um, or comfortable enough in that first kinda setting with the younger kids. I mean, because the snacking and booking, uh, student mentors, they were, ended up running most of that second hour class after some introduction. They were running, cleaning up and, so it just, I think it just needs a little, the individuals that said no just needed a little bit more time to get through and just to make that connection. Uh, ninety-six enjoyed their time. Seventy-four, now that's very low, but we're losing a lot to graduation. Um, I, the best number there is that they felt supported. Um, I was very happy that they were all able to say that, um, without any twisting of arms. Hon, and honest answers, so. Um, that's our second group. Little colored ice goes a long way in, in, in paying back some things. Um, and now talking with our, our families. This is, um, about historically where things are. We're a little higher about with everything that was fantastic. That's better than about forty-nine percent was running before then. Uh, transportation and registration are obviously, um, I think there was, those are gonna be ongoing things. I mean, we can get, try to get ahead of some of that. However, it's the way we've designed our summer school transportation, that's what it was gonna be. Uh, I think there's going to be some headaches on that first week. And also with the idea that, um, we're not stopping, we have locations to where we drop off and not just, you know, like stopping on routes. So, um, registration is, is a fine tuning process. Um, that was Sarah's handling, so. Uh, Sarah and Chelsea's. Uh, so, um, again, I think if we're looking for things to improve on, um, get the word out with our mentors. Get the word out to our families that it's coming. Um, lay out arrival and departure expectations with videos and maps. Um, keep improving our information that goes out to signing up. If you want tag and dodge, please understand, tag and dodge means there are flying objects and lots of noise. Now, if you're looking for mindfulness, that's not the time for juggling. So, um, and continue, it just continued by word of mouth, um, and parent testo testimonials. Our staff, so yeah, as, as what we wanted to keep doing is we obviously wanna keep this building. But in order to do that, I think there's that need for that middle school enrichment opportunities. Um, creativity and enrichments, find teacher passions that they wanna share. Um, gardening comes to mind. More co, more digital things. I think there's a lot of passion in there. Photography would be another one. Um, yeah, and as far as like, the weird stuff, every summer, there's something. Um, this year, it was air quality. That was a new one. Um, and I have, I know now that I will never be a bus driver in my retirement. Um, taking ten middle school age kids just two blocks maybe, or just down the street, because they were going from one side to the, or from middle school to the IC. Um, they called it a party van and, yeah, and it was, yeah, it was two minutes of just, I, I'm usually a pretty laid-back person. But I knew where my mom would say, you know, if I'm gonna turn this car around, I was at that point. Um, last year was heat, if I'm not mistaken. And if I was, there were some very bad days of, uh, heat. Uh, mask and outside and separations were, you know. So weird stuff happens in the summer, doesn't matter when it is. Um, I have valued this opportunity and thank you so much. I've learned a lot of different things and.
Thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it.
We're super lucky to have Eric for five years, to build the program and to make each year better. And this year, I think the highlight for sure, it seems like for everyone, especially for you, was the mentor piece. We have the largest group of mentors.
Yeah.
We've ever had.
Yeah.
And kids, some kids have been probably involved four years.
Mm-hmm.
So we've really seen the relationships and you can't, you can't create those with just ones and twos. You have to be there full-time and you made those opportunities available for kids.
Right, sweet.
It's really great. Thank you.
We wish you only the very best.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for your leadership.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for Eric or me?
Yeah, are there any questions? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was, I'm just trying to see if. I'm trying to win tickets. Uh, sorry.
Does anyone have any questions? Sarah, do you have any?
No.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great presentation.
What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eric.
Yeah. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good luck on your tickets. Thank you.
I, I, I won, so.
Oh, yay!
So if there, so there, I'm going to another game, Ohio State game. I would not be, I'm not gonna get. I'm gonna have to. Any, any rest, not, not me.
Sarah, don't go away.
I know, I'm just, you're just ashamed.
Different spot.
Yep.
Seven A, second reading, board policy three seven seven point one.
Thanks, Eric.
State tournament events. Since this is our second reading, do you wanna talk about it at all? I know there were some revisions made.
Yeah, okay. So back in May, at the education committee meeting, uh, we went through the policy. And then, um, during that time, we were looking just at a few things. Uh, we brought to first reading, um, at the board in June. A couple pieces from the team, just as a reminder. Um, wanting some improved language around what participant means. Um, and then improved language around managers, who, how many, who are they, those kinds of things. Um, wanted clarification about lodging. Um, and when we, when we have lodging, when we don't, who's allowed, who's not, who makes a decision, those types of things. Um, so this is the third red line that we have. It's the best red line we have. And Adam also, uh, went through it, um, as part of the education committee, uh, and presented some ideas to the team. Um, so it's restructured slightly as well, um, with number one focusing on transportation. The second area, um, looking at that lodging piece. The third area, looking at meals, sort of structured better as well. And it's an active voice, so thank you. Um, so we did have the clarification about, um, the, the participants and managers using the term rostered. Um, so, so that's evident there. Um, so yeah, I think, I think we met all of the asks from that June first reading. I know we met all the asks from the June first reading.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Motion approved, I will sit.
Motion by Rod, second by Jim, to approve board policy three seven seven point one. Any additional discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Great team effort, guys, thank you.
Number eight, citizens' comments. Number nine, future agenda items, anything that you would like to suggest, please sit down. Slanted for myself, no. Number ten, schedule of our next meetings. Is there anything that you would like to highlight?
Thank you.
Number eleven, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rod, second by Leah. All those in favor of adjournings, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?